All right, good evening everyone. Welcome to the Goffstown School Board meeting. I call the meeting to order at 7:00. If you can all stand and say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we're going to start with correspondence.
So just a couple of things this evening in the correspondence folder. So the first thing is, we get a little bit of an echo. Maybe just too many mics.
Too many microphones.
No, it helps us here.
It does help us here. So the first thing is, we sent out the media release to announce Mr. Doug Taughton as our new Assistant Business Administrator. So that's the first thing in the correspondence folder. And the second thing is, we received, actually Heather received, an email from Mrs. Vermaakowitz, who wanted to extend her appreciation to the board. So those two things are included, and I'll go this direction first.
All right, communications, good news?
Yes, so last week, Student Council held their KFU drive, and it went really well. Triad Music Honor Society and Theater Club put on a variety show last Friday. And May 24th is prom this year at Sanes.
Awesome, thank you. Do we have any other accommodations, good news?
Ah, Wendy, thank you, I'm sorry, I'm so used to getting at the table. Okay, so a couple of things. Over at Maple Avenue, the 4th graders are participating in show chorus. They will be performing on Wednesday. Mr. Lindano is here, here at Goffstown High School. This year's show is titled "The Musical World of Walt Disney: Celebrating 100 Years of Wonder." There are 26 students who will be performing. This week, they're also over at Maple Avenue appreciating their amazing volunteers. Students have made posters, letters, and other crafts to thank our volunteers for their helping hands. 3rd and 4th graders will be having an afternoon of fun at the end of the 18th to celebrate the end of New Hampshire SAS. Also, if you have not gone on to the Maple Ave Facebook page, they have some amazing pictures from the solar eclipse. It will also be in the weekly newsletter, so please check it out, the students really enjoyed it. Over at Bartlett, there were many 3-on-3 teams that participated in Crispin's House Tournament. Crispin's House actually sponsored a team called the Bartlett Hedgehogs, and Susan's Signs also sponsored a team called the Bartlett Snowballs. Bartlett students were really excited to participate in the solar eclipse, and they'd like to thank the Goffstown Public Library, who actually donated all of their eclipse glasses for students and staff. Over at Glen Lake, the parent group has been reinvigorated. They just completed a clothing and shoe drive fundraiser last week. They also held the first-ever Glen Lake Bike Safety Rodeo on Saturday morning. They raised over $2,000 for the partnership in that event alone, which will be used to support special events and enriching and fun learning experiences over at Glen Lake. Glen Lake Schools Family Fun Night was postponed because of a snowstorm, but it is rescheduled for this Wednesday night. They also had a successful book fair, in spite of the shortened week because of the weather and power outages. And over at Mountain View, they are celebrating Spirit Week this week. The students love being a part of the eclipse. And today was a culminating activity for artists and residents. Our 5th graders participated in a felt project that was on the seasons. So that will be up in the 8th grade wing.
Thank you Wendy. Anyone else, accommodations, go ahead.
I saw some pictures of the luau dance, but oh my gosh, it was adorable. And I thought it was so nice, the way they fixed the hall. It just looked like you could have fun, whether you wanted to dance or whether just be at a luau. I thought it looked like a really fun activity for kids. Also, I was at a volleyball game, and when there was a break, the coach from the other team, their university coach, went over and spoke to her boys and said, "Cool it, when you're here, you'll act respectfully." And I was in the other end and didn't hear anything that was disrespectful. But I thought that was really great, that she saw something, came over, and you know, flipped it in the bud right off. So I will be probably sending something over so they can get some spirit points maybe towards the Spirit of Sportsmanship Award.
Nice, thank you Jenny. Anyone else, go ahead Nicole.
Yeah, just quickly, when we were at Spring Fest this past weekend, I got to interact with the high school football team and the Mountain View cheerleaders, who were both there raising money. They were both really well, you know, presented themselves really well, very polite. The cheerleaders were actually going around and proactively offering to do cheers for anyone that bought 50/50 raffle tickets. So Jack and I did get to see a cheer, and it was really nice to see them working really hard to support their clubs and organizations.
Awesome, thank you Nicole. Anyone else, accommodations, good news? And to tuck on to what Nicole said, I want to thank PNC for putting together the Spring Fest Board. We were there starting it, it was very well done and very informative. And I thank you all for putting that together, it was really nicely. Nicely done, all right, so.
Credit for that goes to Nicole, she did a great job designing.
Yeah, it became really nice. All right, so no other accommodations, good news? All right, moving on to public comment. Is there any public comment tonight? Hi, come on up. There's a microphone right here, just state your name and address.
Hi.
Hello.
My name's Kristen Remm, I live at 7 Reed Street in Goffstown. I've been thinking about this a lot lately, since the election, and I was wondering if there's any policy regarding voting members of the board being related. And if there is, could you point me in the direction of it? And if there's not, I'd like the board to consider adopting one, because I feel that it would be a conflict of interest for family members to serve on a board together, unless it is a non-voting seat, such as a student representative. And my reason for this is that most nonprofit boards do this in an effort to keep from having the look of one member having two votes, or a familial conflict, such as they're mad at each other, and then one person decides to leave, or both of them decide to leave, and then you have unexpected vacancies on the board. And then also the look of unbalanced power. Now, while there are no laws against it for municipalities, it is proven, and I have a quote here, "A person almost always has direct interest in his or her spouse's affairs." See Solinsky versus Municipal Council of Township of Woodbridge, comma, 469A dot 2D 96, New Jersey, 1983. Chapter 12, Public Official Ethics and Conflicts of Interest. I got this from a website off of durham.nh.us, and I can send you all the direct link if you'd like. This is just because I was, I've been really thinking about it, and I just think that for the betterment of our schools, I do not believe that two people who are related should be on a board, whether it be spouses, or brothers or sisters, or aunts and uncles, or cousins, or things like that. So if there is not one, I think that you should adopt that. If there is one, I would love to see it. So that's one piece. The second piece is, are we allowed to know what books are being challenged, when they get challenged? Because that was something from the last meeting.
So typically, a public comment is not a back and forth.
Oh, okay, well, I would like to know if that is a thing. And then also, in a training that I was on, it says that there's an annual injury report, and I can follow this all up with an email, that is supposed to be available to staff at the school of who all is, like all the injuries that happen at school. And that is, that's supposed to be made available. And I would like to know where I can access that as well.
So if you'd like to just reach out to me, I'd be happy to talk to you about all those things.
Sure, okay. And then I'll follow up to you about the policies.
Anything you have, if you can just email it to Denise. Your minutes, if you can just email them to Denise, thank you. Is there any other public comment? No, okay, I'm closing public comments. So we are going to open up to the Maple Avenue Teaching and Learning Presentation.
Welcome, Mrs. Pischka and team.
Thank you, yes, so my team here. We have Jen Berg, 1st grade teacher, Nicole McGoon, 3rd grade teacher, Lauren Pruno, 4th grade teacher, Kim Fasano, PFT President, Derek Lindano, music teacher, and I'm Suzanne Pischka, principal. So these people here with me are just a small representation of our school leadership team. And the school leadership team helped this year with putting together a plan for motivation. That's something that I think in the last few years, we set aside, because we were distracted with other things at school. And when we started to look at our test scores, thinking, why aren't they what they used to be? We went back to brainstorming, how can we make them better? And we all know that if we are motivated with knowing what will be the outcome, and how, you know, will there be anything there for me, we do a better job. So we talked to the kids about what is motivation and incentives, and that we work toward bettering ourselves. And there are often times where we look to be motivated by others. So this was our plan that the school leadership team put together. And so we will each talk about sections of this, like the test behaviors list Nicole will talk about. There was preparation in each classroom. We started in February and March with writing preparation, and then math and reading have been March and April. We also, Derek, will talk about letters that our staff wrote to each student. Buddy classes were involved. We had motivational posters, and we have some samples for you. Grade level assembly kickoff for testing, daily incentives, prizes for expected behavior, and daily snacks. And then coming up this week, we have an end-of-test reward party. So we can go to the next slide, and I'll have Nicole come over.
Hopefully I can stand back from the mic and not be very loud. And we really hate the microphone. So as 3rd and 4th grade teachers, we set aside some time to discuss what the kids would do before they started the test, what should it look like during the test and after they finish testing. So we brainstormed those ideas with our students as a class. For example, the night before, making sure you get a good night's sleep. That morning, having a good breakfast, because some of the kids don't come fed, so that's part of the reason they get snack, as one of their sort of prizes, maybe you could call it. But we then took things that you would do in the middle of testing, like staying seated, being quiet and respectful of your classmates. Also, at the end of the test, making sure that you have some books to read, and that you're reading and not distracting others. So basically, just good, what does it look like to be a student when you're taking the test all throughout that process? So.
All right, so I'm on the leadership team as a Unified Arts representative. And the Unified Arts team usually has very little to do with testing. So I tried to figure out, you know, what we could contribute. And the teachers are mentioning in the past that sometimes parents would write letters to the kids, wishing them luck on their test. But they also mentioned, for the kids who didn't receive a letter, it could be, you know, have a negative effect possibly on their test, because you know, everybody else just got a letter and I didn't get one. So I thought to myself, well, what if they all got a letter from somebody that they all knew? And then I said, well, they all know me. So I came up with a plan. Myself, all the Unified Arts teachers, and all the administrators, wrote letters that were distributed to the kids. So every single kid got a different letter, or letters each day from somebody in the school that they knew. And I haven't heard from the teachers.
I loved it.
How did it go? So hopefully they'd enjoy it, gave them something short and sweet to motivate them before they took their test. That's all I have for you, you can keep those.
And then we also looked into how 1st and 2nd grade classrooms could help motivate their 3rd and 4th graders in the school. I'm a 1st grade teacher, so we wanted to come up with a buddy class system. So we paired up through Student Council. We paired up, each 1st and 2nd grade classroom were buddied up with a 3rd or 4th grade classroom. And they were encouraged to make six different motivators to encourage the 3rd and 4th graders. So in class, in 1st and 2nd grade classes, they would make notes or draw a picture. In my class, we painted rocks, and we wrote a letter "U" on them. So it was a "U rock," so we gave that as our last little gift. Or some other teachers wrote a little note and gave Smarties, or glow sticks. They received motivational posters. So it was just a great way to get the 1st and 2nd graders involved too. And I know my students loved making it, they were so excited. It just took a very small time of our day, so it didn't really take away from academics. And also incorporated skills like writing, so that was academic anyways. So it was great, and some bulletin boards were decorated too, to encourage the 3rd and 4th graders. And then just as a mom, because I also have a 1st grade son at Maple, he is just, he can't wait to be a 3rd grader to take his test. He sees that snack tray coming down, and he is salivating and so jealous of his sister. He just wants to take that test. So I think it also motivates the 1st and 2nd graders. So they're looking forward to taking their SAS testing in 3rd and 4th grade.
And then on the other side, I'm a 4th grade teacher. So we were on the receiving end of these wonderful items. And the kids really looked forward to them, so here are some examples. I'm actually Student Council advisor, so I have two buddy classes, so we could make it a little bit easier for the kids who have to give the information and whatnot. So I have two classrooms that actually, they hung these on our door. So I've hung them in the classroom for the last few weeks. So this one, all of the kids wrote little notes, you know, rock the SAS and all of that. And then this one, they all drew us index cards, just with motivational things. And then each day, the two teachers actually got together and they did the notes. So we had, today was "U glow, U glow on the test," or something like that. And they all had individual little papers with glow sticks. We had a Smarties one, we had a Tootsie Roll one, a Mint one. So the kids really looked forward, because I would set it up before they came in. So they came into the letters that Derek had mentioned. The posters were up that they could look at every day. And then they also had these little treats. And I would, the first thing I would hear is, "Ms. Peake, can I have my treat?" So they got the snack tray, and then they got a little tiny treat with it too. And today, all the kids were wearing the glow bracelets. So they said that was their power for their last test. So it really motivated the older kids also. And when they saw things from kids they know, or their siblings' friends, they were like, I gotta do this right, because they're looking. So they also were very aware of their role model status to those younger kids. So it definitely was beneficial on both sides.
Administration came to the PFT in January and asked if we would be willing to donate snacks and juices to help the kids motivate, and also a selection of prizes as well. All totaled, we donated 1,574 food items and 1,440 juice pouches to help them. It was a lot of trips to BJ's. But this really helped the kids to get a little snack in beforehand, get some extra energy, and do their tests. And then the prizes afterwards, we raided our prize closet and gave a bunch of activity books, and pencils, and all sorts of other stuff that we just had kind of left over. So, yeah, and that really helped the kiddos with getting their tests done.
And then, as Wendy already mentioned in our good news, we have an end-of-testing party this Thursday. The PFT is bringing popsicles, and the kids have activities that they'll, you know, be playing. We have cornhole, and Jenga, and chalk, and a dance party going on outside. So hopefully the weather will be good. But they're really excited about ending with the party. Are there any questions for us?
I just have a comment. When all of this started, I did receive information from a parent of a 1st grader about what the motivation does to the students taking the test. And that was really helpful as a parent to get that information I wasn't super aware of. So just some of the backstory there was really helpful. And like Ms. Berg mentioned, kids coming home, it carried over into home. So some of those like motivational things that they say, you know, those were, I saw those in my own household being said. And then talking about it too, the things that they're doing, collecting the rocks to bring in and why. So it was a really fun exercise that I think just will have a lasting impact. And hopefully, my current 1st grader will be overly joyed to start testing.
I mean, we can't work magic.
Thank you Caroline.
I also thought I'd mention, so first of all, thank you to Maple Ave for coming and doing the presentation. Maple Ave definitely was the frontrunner in getting together. We have a SAS team and an assessment team that gets together every week. And we talk about different parts of testing, whether it's accountability, what have you. But motivation was a big topic that we've been talking about since the fall. So you just heard from Maple Ave, but similar things happened at Bartlett and happened at Mountain View. I know I was over at Mountain View, and I got to smell popcorn for like 3 hours the other day with like a million flavors.
200 bags.
200 bags by Miss Milligan. And that includes at the high school. I had an 11th grader who took his science SAS test today. Mr. McDermott got in front of those students, and we're cheering them on, getting them ready for the SAS testing. So it's something that we've definitely made a focus for this year. And I'm just really proud of everything that we've done at our buildings.
Thank you Wendy. Hang on one second, Nicole, go ahead.
Well, I have a 6th grader who also just did testing, and the only thing I heard about it was the sriracha popcorn, so great work on the popcorn. But I also wanted to say, I think the letters were a great idea, because I've thought about that before, how some kids just might not get it. I mean, for whatever reason, right? So that was a really great idea, that was Mr. Lindano on the UA team, kudos.
Thank you Nicole. Go ahead Jenny.
Wendy, would you talk a little bit about the backstory for anybody in the audience that didn't hear our discussion last fall about why we decided to go this route with the motivation?
Well, I think any time we're looking at test scores, we're trying to figure out, how can we best motivate our students to be able to show their best? And when we thought back to what we were doing in our classrooms pre-COVID, we got away from some of those fun activities that we had been doing. So when looking at our test scores, besides having great instruction, what else could we do? And we just kind of recalibrated ourselves and said, we need to get back to what was working before, which is why we went back to that motivation.
Thanks Jenny. Thank you Wendy, anyone else? Go ahead Brian.
Maybe just final word, thank you to Wendy, thank you to Mrs. Pischka and the team. This is what it's all about. So to see, you know, the great work that our teachers are doing, trying to motivate kids. This is about creating a culture of importance. That's what this is really about. We're not trying to motivate someone to perform at a higher level. We're trying to get kids to do the best they can, to take it seriously, and to have a collective culture that it matters. These tests are important. Having worked in other school districts that didn't put an emphasis on the test, it quickly becomes part of the culture that teachers can kind of say to kids, "Well, just do the best you can, this doesn't really matter." And that tone doesn't work. So when we have high school kids taking the SAT, we want kids to do the best they can and show their best work all the way through the school system. So many thanks for the great work that you're all doing, we really appreciate it.
Yes, thank you very much. All right, well, you're welcome to stay, or you guys can all go home.
Please, please go home.
Thank you very much for coming out tonight.
Thank you for being here.
All right, so we're going to move on to approving the minutes from April 1st. Anybody see anything, do you have a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you Nicole, do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Reda, any further discussion? CNN, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. All right, committee reports, A and F, Dan?
I'd like to offer a motion that we approve a total manifest value as $1,850,134.39.
Thank you Dan, do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Caroline, okay Dan, go ahead.
We have some payroll taxes and benefits of approximately $1.4 million. Then Sped Activity, Crest Collaborative for $8,600. Jessica Vermet for $8,800. Johnson ABA Consulting for $7,350. The Lighthouse School, $12,280. Parker Education, just about $8,000. And Stratford Learning, $8,350 about. Those are the expenses that are $5,000 and over. General expenses to Amazon for books, equipment, supplies, $5,200. Electricity from Eversource, $13,600. Propane from Dead River, $25,700. Transportation by the Goffstown Truck Center for regular education, $25,000. The Home Depot Pro, which is our facility, supplies, equipment. And we bought some scrubbers for Mountain View for those floors. So that was a little high at $22,200, but well worth it. Pelmac Industries, there are security grant expenditures, $199,451. Music and Arts, musical instrument replacement, $5,000. And Xerox, Xerox is the people who have our copier lease. And after 6 months, Xerox finally got the bills right, and we paid them $24,133. And food, $24,194.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any further discussion? CNN, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Thank you Dan.
You're welcome, we got a bunch of other things. And Scott is going to address those from the comfy seat.
Comfy seat.
This is very comfortable. So the first item on your agenda is a lot of financial or project-related items on the agenda tonight. But the first item for discussion is the EMC project. For those of you in the audience, or who may be watching on television, this project, EMC is Energy Management Consultants. And the school district has been working with EMC for several months now, looking at a variety of different projects across all of our schools. Dealing mostly with boilers, HVAC, lighting, you know, energy efficiency type items. The district has been pursuing what's called a municipal lease purchase agreement, which in many cases is performance-related, meaning that the energy savings derived from the installation of new HVAC equipment and/or lighting will yield both energy savings, which will be reduction in energy savings, as well as operational costs, less repairs on very old items. So as you know also about our, the last school board meeting, I informed you that the roof over the Mountain View Middle School library is in a failure status. The seams are continually popping, and we've had water intrusion in the library there. So we did ask EMC to evaluate the potential of putting that roof as part of this municipal lease project. And there are some good news, and I'm going to share this with you at the last school board meeting, is that although the roof membrane itself is not eligible for any type of energy rebates, the insulation is. So they did include the roof, the Mountain View roof, into this lease purchase agreement. So before the roof, we were a little under $3 million of the project cost, and now we're a little over $3.3 million. So EMC has been working with two financing organizations. We have yet to select one of them, but we are working with both, with two of them. We have yet to select one of them, but we are working with both, with two of them. And it looks like the interest rate that we'll be dealing with is right around four and a half percent. And we're looking at a 17-year lease purchase agreement. And the first payment of that agreement will not be due for over, well over a year because you garner the energy savings in that first year to make your first payment or to apply towards it. And the rebates and the incentives serve as a down payment on the project. I wanted to let the board know that in any type of endeavor like this one, we do have legal counsel review the contract documents with Energy Management Consultants, EMC. And they will also review all of the financing documents as well. As part of this agreement, EMC has done extensive analysis in terms of what are the energy savings for all of these measures, whether that be the insulation in the roof to new lighting, to new boilers, to weatherization, et cetera. And that is how they derive those costs. So, and that's how we get the energy rebates from Eversource and other providers. So we're at the point now where the one last piece will be legal counsel reviewing the financing instrument for the district. But we're at a point now where the contractors have been lined up. So that's the good news. So the HVAC, the boiler replacements, EMC has secured vendors for that work. That's not something that we can do in September, October. We have to do it over the summer months. Lighting can be done in the evenings and on weekends, and that's not mission critical in terms of the timing, but we have to do the HVAC work during the summer. So the good news is that we are, you know, they are lined up for us as well as, as we mentioned, the equipment itself. So I'm at a point now where I need the board's authority to allow me to start to execute contracts contingent upon legal review. So our legal counsel, and I put that in your packet, they did review the contracts. There's a couple of things such as retainage and some other language that I'm going to have EMC change. And then if there's anything on terms of the financing piece, I'll work that through Sol Leslie and Kidder as well.
So hang on one second, Scott. Go ahead, Jared.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is not going to render the middle school inoperable for the summer. We're still going to have programs there.
Correct.
Okay.
What will be, the project that will impact Mountain View is when we do the pump house and we do the full replacement. That will take our fire suppression system offline for as long as the project is going on. But we're not, we're targeting, we're tentatively talking about for the summer of '25.
For that project.
For that project. And that project is very challenging to find vendors and it's a pretty complicated project, but that will take Mountain View offline.
Yeah. So I also wanted to disclose that if you recall, we were looking at a price of about a $16,000 annual payment for this $3 million of projects. Now that we're at 3.3 million, that cost is up to about 20, a little over $20,000. And it's largely because the roof project in and of itself is not eligible for a lot of rebates. The roof membrane, the insulation garners 50% rebates from Eversource, but the roof itself doesn't. So that's kind of what's driving that bit of a cost increase. But recognizing that this is an opportunity through significant energy savings to accomplish, you know, for those of you who have participated in the CIP process, we are knocking off a lot of items on that CIP list with this endeavor.
Jared, did you have more questions?
A different question on the same line. So Scott, you might not have this, and I'm trying to use my magnifying glass as I read this. We're looking at roughly 33,000, I'm sorry, 3.3 million you said that would be financed. It's after rebates.
Right.
And I know that you put the cost savings at the point in time those site savings would be received.
Right.
However, what I'm not seeing is those savings in perpetuity if all things else remain equal? Because I'm trying to understand what our return on investment is here.
Yeah, so if you, again, I apologize. I mean, this is, unfortunately, there's so much data on this one page. But if you look at the first column, what is being predicted is that we're going to have energy savings of $125,000 and change in that first year. And then if you go to the second year, they assume that we're going to have, cost of energy is going to go up. And I think he put in here, I believe he looked at a 3% increase in energy if you look to the escalation. So every year it goes up 3% in terms of what the savings will be, assuming that electricity and propane will go up at least 3%. Then if you go to the next call, the next row down says operational savings. These are mostly related to not having to do repairs on some of these equipment, new equipment. So that's what gets you to your gross savings. And then below that is your principal and interest payment, which is $243,000 a year. But because you have those offsetting savings, your net cost is that $20,754. So you will, what you will see is if you go all the way to column, say 17 and 18, you're going to start to see those savings in those years beyond year 17. You'll continue to save, but yet you won't have the corresponding payment.
So all of the things remaining equal, if I'm reading this right again with my magnifying glass, annual gross savings we're seeing is roughly 3.8 million. And the total cost that would be financed is roughly 4.1 million?
Yes.
So we're looking at a difference roughly of a couple hundred thousand then?
Yes.
Over the course of the 20-year period?
Of the payments, yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. Because I know that with people being very budget conscious right now, you know, this just goes to show that we're knocking off things off CIP. We're also getting savings associated with this. So over a 20-year period, only spending $300,000 and having more efficient schools, I think, is a no-brainer.
And so not only are we, you know, I think the one thing that really should never get lost whenever we do these projects is that, and we saw that in New Boston when we did the lighting project, the lighting was demonstrably better in New Boston. So it's the learning, the teaching and learning piece. You cannot discount that. It's like we can talk about saving money all day long, but when educators can dim lights and when kids who have sensory issues, you can dim light, that is, you know, massively important.
Water's not leaking into the library.
Yeah, so there's a lot of, you know, positives that I know we do, I mean, I know I tend to focus on the dollars and cents piece, but there is a lot of benefits to having, you know, better climate in the control in the buildings and better lighting and those types of things, so.
I'll make the motion. I move to authorize the business administrator and facilities director to proceed with the EMC project for the Goffstown School District as presented. Furthermore, to authorize the business administrator to execute all contracts with EMC and the financial institution after legal counsel review. Do I have a second by Dan? Is there any further discussion? Okay, see and none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Okay, Scott.
All right, the next topic is auditing services. So what you have in your packet is a proposal from Plodzik and Sanderson. Plodzik and Sanderson has been the auditing firm for the Goffstown and New Boston and SAU for well over six years. They are a very large auditing firm, one of the largest in the state, who deal primarily with school districts and municipalities. One of the benefits of an organization like Plodzik and Sanderson is that we, they are so large that we do not see the same people in our buildings at the SAU for the audit. Every year we have different auditors come in, so we have a different set of eyes. You'll recall that when the district did experience issues a while ago, some of you were on the board at the time, there was a single practitioner, one person. With Plodzik and Sanderson, you see different auditors every auditing season. And with that comes different focuses, because they are allowed to prioritize and to focus in on different areas of the school district's financial operations. So with that being said, you'll see that the proposal, there is a 5% increase in year number one, but that remains flat. That increase stays the same for the first three years. And then there is another bump, a little over 4% in those two option years. So overall, I, you know, in my opinion, and I believe we talked about this at A and F, the A and F committee meeting was, it's a pretty fair price for the services that they do perform. Also that shouldn't be overlooked is that the firm also provides assistance to my team and the business office if there are questions regarding our operations. And they are just, they're a good resource, you know, in that respect. So they've been, the reports, you do get the auditing report as well as the explanation from, typically it's Cheryl Pratt, who's one of the directors, explains it. And I think we've had pretty good results from Plodzik. So it would be my recommendation that you would authorize extending this contract with them. And it's a three-year contract with two option years. So that's what you have before you.
Does anybody have any questions or comments? Oh, go ahead, Dan. Okay, it's up to you.
Oh, you have something?
We have what Scott gave us. I move to authorize the business administrator to enter into a new agreement with our current auditing firm, Plodzik and Sanderson, for an additional three-year term with two option years covering the fiscal years 2025 through 2029 as presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Shane? Any further discussion? See and none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous.
So the next topic is school transportation contract. And I wanted to brief the board in public session about school transportation and the contract in general terms, recognizing that contract negotiations with vendors are typically done in a non-public session. But what I can share with you in the public session is that school transportation providers, by and large, there are two major players in the state of New Hampshire, it's First Student and STA. STA is Student Transportation of America, and we often refer to them as Goffstown Truck Center. Well, Goffstown Truck Center was a family-owned business operating in Goffstown for decades. They got purchased by Student Transportation of America. Both First Student and STA have purchased a lot of these private companies and therefore you have, they're, they by far capture the majority of the student transportation market in New Hampshire. Butler Transportation is another one that is a lot smaller. They have two or three school districts, I believe, in the state. One of the things, again, I can state publicly is that it's no surprise that finding school bus drivers has been a challenge since COVID and before COVID. Paying bus drivers a wage that will attract and retain quality individuals has been a challenge for all of these bus companies. And with that, there are wage pressures in order to pay these folks. We used to pay our bus driver $16 to $18 an hour. I can tell you that we're north of $24 an hour now. There are surrounding school districts that are paying $28 an hour for a school bus driver. So for those who are watching on television or for those in the audience, Josh DeRocher, if you wanted to be a bus driver, you can do that and the money, the pay is there. We are also desperately trying to secure folks who will do middle school transportation for our athletics programs. And what I could want to share publicly, because I get these phone calls almost on a weekly basis, is that there are two bus drivers in Goffstown who transport our high school athletes on a regular basis. That is it. And that's all they do. They don't do other bus runs. They only do athletics and co-curriculars for the high school, period. They cannot find individuals who will be bus drivers who will do only Mountain View Middle School transportation for athletics and co-curriculars. So if there's anyone out there, whether they be a coach or a person in the community who wants to transport middle school students to
Could be a parent.
Or a parent, or anyone. Please, please contact me or contact the bus company. We are desperately in need of that. We have not been able to provide transportation for three years for middle school because of that. But that is the reason. We cannot use an existing route driver because they have to get back in time to drive the bus for the different routes that we have in our community. I have chatted with an individual at Mountain View, a coach, about maybe transporting kids to local schools on a one-way basis to Bedford or perhaps Manchester. But we can't go further than that because they have to then get back in time to do a particular bus run. So it's, we'll talk more in non-public session about the state of student transportation, but it is not great. And that's kind of where we're at.
Nicole, go ahead.
For anybody that might be interested, is there some flexibility in which days you, like say you might be able to do some of that after-school transportation?
Yeah, there is flexibility. I mean, if there are folks who can only do Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays, that's better than no one.
Just trying to put it out there.
Yes, any flexibility is
Thanks, Nicole. Go ahead, Jenny.
The same rules go with sports busing?
Yes.
As, we have to have the same credentials as the
We do have a little bit of flexibility with respect to sports in terms of the type of bus. So there are some school districts who have either leased or purchased passenger vans, like 12 passenger vans, where those, so you don't, there are some relaxed rules there. There's also some legislation that is trying to make it a little bit easier, but
So you wouldn't need a CDL if you had
Correct. You don't need a CDL. But it's difficult because most of our teams are more than 12. So yes, that might work for a golf team, might work for a music, you know, trip, you know, all-state music or something. Those things can work, but we are already trying to do some of those things already where we would rent a van if we had to. So we've been trying. It's just not great. So that was it for student, for school transportation. We'll talk more and then I'll
I'd like to add something too. Would it be fair to say that the supervision for sports trip is higher because the coaches would also ride on the bus?
Yes. Yes, the coaches are on the bus when the students, athletes are on the bus.
Well, one of the things that I've heard is there are potential drivers who are kind of worried about
Yes, yes, you are correct.
That's a good point. Thanks, Dan. Anyone else? All right, go ahead.
All right, the next one is use of the SIR3 grant. These are matching funds. It's a request for a Mountain View Middle School playground structure, actually structures. So a couple of weeks ago, and Jess is, Jess Milligan is here, the principal at Mountain View, we had a discussion with Mountain View Partnership. Mountain View Partnership is the parent-teacher organization for Mountain View. And they were looking to do some projects at the school. And one of the things that came up was adding a couple of playground structures to Mountain View. You'll see in your packet that Valerie Neal, who is the president of Mountain View Partnership, that organization is committed to donating $15,000. And that would assist with an overall cost of about $35,000 to add two playground structures at Mountain View. So the request before you is simply to use the remaining $20,000 of SIR3 grant funds. If you recall, I think it was about two or three meetings ago, I told you that we had about 20,000 left, to use that as more of a matching fund for, to combine with Mountain View Partnership's donation to procure and install two of these playground structures. I do not have the drawings of those. The folks at MVP and Mountain View, I think they did switch up which structure that they were going to have, but I did, there is a diagram of the two that are in there. And there's also a small amount of money for some contingencies in terms of if we hit some ledge or, I don't know, like, there's always stuff that happens in all these projects. So with that, we were also assured that this would be installed by the middle of August, which we have some tight deadlines with those SIR grants. We have to have them paid and invoiced and everything by September. So the supplier has told us that they'd be able to meet all of those obligations.
Scott, would this liquidate the rest of those funds?
Yeah, pretty much liquidated. I mean, I have to, again, we manage these grants on a monthly basis. If there's a few thousand dollars left, then I'll work with Steve or Randy in their departments and we'll be buying a laptop or an iPad or something. But, well, those are pretty much liquidated. So with that, if the board was amenable to this, in order to, we would have to do a public hearing, anything, oh, actually, we don't need one now. It's just a $20,000 donation. That's right, that was this legislation. So we don't need a public hearing. So I forgot about that. Yeah.
Go ahead, Dan.
That was my bill too.
It was.
Yeah.
Dan, go ahead.
So would actually work for a motion to fund this contingent upon the receipt of the contribution?
Yes.
So are you changing now what is pre-written for me to read?
Yeah, because we don't need a public hearing.
You can just add to it.
Yeah, you put public hearing in here.
Okay. I was just going to say, I think this is great. There's not a lot there now for the kids. I actually, I saw the drawings and I actually, I saw the drawings in the packet ahead of time and showed them to my son. He's like, yeah, well, it's cool.
Yeah, a lot of climbing, you know, two climbing things.
Yeah, it looks like a good addition.
The playground structure at Mountain View gets a lot of use. I mean, it's one of those things that when, I remember when we put that in, at the time, people were thinking, oh, middle school kids aren't going to play on this. They do.
There were kids playing on it when I went to pick up my son today, a lot of them. This is, I think this is a good use. And thank you to M V P for putting this much money forward.
All right, so I'll make the motion to authorize the business administrator to proceed with the MVMS Playground Project using fifteen thousand dollars in M V P funds and up to twenty thousand dollars in S R three grant funds contingent upon the donation from the Mountain View Partnership.
All right, do I have a second? By Jenny, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, where you announce. Thank you, Scott.
All right, one last one, and that is Capital Reserve Fund Project. So we've been talking about this for a couple of months with respect to that list of projects, which, again, they're not in the correct order. Dan has reminded me that on multiple occasions. But we are recommending that we proceed with two projects for the summer of 2024. One is the Mountain View Middle School locker room epoxy flooring. And the second one is the replacement of the Mountain View Middle School cafe tables. So the locker room floor is original to the construction of the school well over thirty years ago. It's in really bad shape. And we did go out and Randy did secure bids for that. And the lower bid is in your packet. That was from Northeast Flooring Solutions. The one thing that we, part of the bid is they grind down the existing epoxy floor, the existing flooring, to prep it for the epoxy. And it requires a two-twenty electrical circuit. And we need to hire an electrician to put one in with pigtail or what?
You don't, we don't have a two-twenty that they can run from?
No, not close by. Yeah. So that grinds, they need it for grinding. So again, we're looking to do that over the summer. The cafe tables, again, we're looking to obtain twenty-two tables. The original ones that are in there now were fifteen years old. And they were original to Goffstown High School when we moved them over to Mountain View. I almost took Brian's hand out, like, at the public hearing with it.
Yeah, it was close.
It was close.
Yep, almost lost a finger.
Yeah. That's a true story. So we do need to do this. What is also included in here is we have to dispose of the old tables. So the town doesn't always like it when we show up with stuff and put it into the dumpsters. So they don't look fondly upon that. So we have to look at the disposal of the old ones. And we have been, by the way, we've been repairing these things for years now, you know, trying to weld the seats back on. But a lot of it is just the mechanisms of the collapsible tables themselves. So that's kind of where we stand. I did a suggested motion on your memo, as well as I provided you with the cost, the low vid cost estimate, as well as what the tables look like. Very similar to what we have now. They'll make color choices. Facilities will work with Mountain View leadership to do that. And we are looking at round tables. So I know there's pictures of square ones or rectangular ones, but they are round.
Go ahead, Dan.
So how much was the estimate for the electrician put in the circuit? And would that cost by a generator that has two-twenty that we could use the generator later?
It's twelve hundred, I think it was a thousand or to twelve hundred dollars. Don't quote, it was right around there.
So is that something Randy can look into to see, could they run this machine with one of those smaller generators that has two-twenty?
We can certainly do that. And I think there's flexibility within, you know, the motion so that, you know, to try to offset the cost.
Because I don't know anything how long they're going to have to run it for and all that stuff. So I'll leave that, leave you with the idea.
I'll make a note.
Anyone else? Any comments, questions? Someone want to read the motion?
I'll do it. I move to authorize the business administrator and facilities director to proceed with the following two projects using funds from the school district's Facilities Capital Reserve Fund, C R F. One, the MVMS Locker Room Flooring Project for a cost not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. And two, the replacement and disposal of the MVMS Cafe Tables for a cost not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you. Do I have a second? By Nicole, any further discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, where you announce.
And then the last item, which again is also going to be discussed in non-public, but what I can share with you in public session is that the town of Goffstown charges its impact fees to developers when they develop, when they construct buildings in our community. Those impact fees go to a variety of sources. School is one of them, but also is Parks and Rec, police, fire, D P W, et cetera. So, and it is for the increased costs of what that development brings to the community. So to give you an example, if we were to construct a new elementary school, we would not be able to garner impact fees on what the current brick and mortar capacity is of our two elementary schools, all right? But all of our portable classrooms that we have are any increased capacity. If we added brick and mortar to an existing school or built a new school, that additional capacity allows for the collection of impact fees. So the town hired a company to reevaluate what those impact fee methodology would be. And we're going, with that, we did ask our attorney to provide us a legal opinion as to what that methodology might look like and what's the criteria for that methodology? Because we were given some different rationale for that, and we needed a legal opinion. So we'll share that legal opinion with the board in a non-public session. And then the board is free to release that legal opinion to the public at any time. So, but I wanted to at least be transparent with the community and the public. That's why we got the legal opinion. And then it is the board's purview to either release it or not release it. So that's it for that. We'll discuss that one and the student transportation contract in non-public session.
All right, thank you, Scott.
All right.
Anything else for Scott? Okay.
We're good.
All right, thank you.
That was very comfortable, I have to say.
Yeah, now you're going to move. All right, moving on, the Budget Committee, Jared.
Our next Budget Committee meeting will be right in this room at six P M tomorrow.
Okay. P and C, Nicole.
Do you want me to do it?
I'm fine either way, so I'll grab it if you'd like.
I will just say, I want to ditto what Brian said about the board, the presentation board. It's really great. We can use it again if we want to do the open house, including board members, the student rep. The student rep will have to replace for the open house, but we have a nice little-
We can keep her picture there.
Yes, we can. Maybe she'll stay. But anyways, I wanted to share that.
Sure, yeah, we had a great time at Spring Fest, a lot of good conversations. I think Jenny mentioned that some people specifically said it was just good to have the board there, showing some support out in the public and having conversations with people. Gave out a lot of candy to kids. We got a lot of entries for the sweatshirt that we were raffling off. So I actually do have the cards here, and I'll pull a name momentarily as a sweatshirt winner. We also have the staff appreciation video coming up for Staff Appreciation Week. So if you haven't sent a time to Jennifer at G T V for that, please do so. And our next meeting is May sixth at six P M. So just before I finish up here.
Yeah. The adults enjoyed the candy, too.
I enjoyed some candy.
How to fold the corner so they can be the lucky winner.
All right, so. Oh, my gosh. It's Caroline.
Oh, my gosh.
I promise it's not called Caroline. This was live, everybody saw.
I didn't look in the bag.
All right, well, we'll have to find another giveaway. It's really okay, pull another name out. That was a test to make sure the bowl worked at Spring Fest. I was the first one in there.
Linda Terrier.
All right, well, we'll-
Congrats, Linda.
We'll give Linda a call, and we'll find something fun for Caroline.
It's okay, the live recognition was fantastic. I have some extra candy.
All right, so next meeting is before our next school board meeting.
Yeah, I have to say, people really enjoyed those raffles. A lot of kids were coming over and filling them out.
Yeah, we got a few middle schoolers that were really excited to put their names in.
And a lot of the kids also were excited to show their school to people. Like to find their school, and this is the one I'll be going to next year. So it was kind of cool that the parents and the kids were all engaged in it, so.
So thank you for everyone that participated.
Yeah, it was great.
Can I just add one more thing? We do have volunteer appreciation next week.
I think I just heard that it's maybe going on this week, but I do have the graphic in the post that I'll share with Brian.
So we have, over the last couple of years, we've collaborated with the town. So it's not just the schools, it's volunteers everywhere. So we encourage everybody to mention, at mention, people who are volunteers in the community, but especially the schools.
Nice, thank you. All right, so we're good with P and C? All right, policy review, Shane.
Thank you, Heather. Policy met last Monday, and we really dove deep into three different policies, one of which we'll be discussing a little bit later tonight, non-public due to some legal opinion. But we did the policy B C A, which is the Ethics Policy Statement, which we talked about at our last board meeting, two board meetings ago. Either way, we talked about that, and we talked about maybe adding a signature line. But Jared had a great idea as far as affirming the policy through a motion. So we're actually going to try to add that piece to the policy. Additionally, we reviewed the wellness policy, which we had a couple tweaks with, and that was about it. So those of you coming for first reads tonight, again, we'll be doing the student rep policy later, based on legal opinion. So that will come back a little bit later.
All right, and next meeting?
And we will meet on May thirteenth at five-thirty at the S A U.
Great, thank you, Shane. C and E, Jenny.
At our last C and E meeting on Monday, we had a presentation from the Special Education Department. They presented information on the numbers of special education students by school. They discussed our out-of-district placements, the supports and interventions utilized with students, summer school, as well as current staffing. The department also explained the specialized programs available at Mountain View Middle School and at Goffstown High School for our students. And the packet of information presented last Monday night is with your packets tonight. And could you put those, send them? Oh, I don't need to, never mind. Never mind. And our next meeting is May thirteenth at seven P M at the S A U.
Thank you, Jenny. Technology Committee, Dan.
I have corresponded with Mr. Borget. And it looks like we will meet in public session for about thirty seconds on Monday, May sixth, but he's on vacation right now. So we'll figure it out when he comes back. The reason I say thirty seconds is because we're going to be dealing with the security, and that's a non-public session. So thirty seconds to open up the meeting, approve the minutes, and go into non-public. It's really easy when there's only one of us there. Probably around four-thirty.
All right, thanks, Dan. At the S A U, Dan?
Yes.
All right, Superintendent.
Thank you. So I wanted to let the board know that we have a meeting this week. Mr. McBride and I will be meeting with the Manchester School District and our partners in Bedford and Lunandary. Together, we comprise what's called our C T E Region Fifteen Agreement. And we're working on a new four-year agreement with the Manchester School District to provide career and technical education programs along with Bedford and Lunandary. So we've asked for a few additions to be included in the contract, including notification for any unfilled, uncertified staff in different programs that they offer, as well as making sure that we receive the Manchester School District calendar in a timely way. The eclipse went well last week. The weather was perfect. I hope everybody had a nice time. The process for absenteeism and early dismissals went well. So we tried to make it as easy for parents as we could, and the kids were terrific. So I hope everybody had a really incredible experience. Last week, Mr. Loring was here at the high school meeting with Mr. McBride and his team. Goffstown High School is going through a facilities audit review right now. And it was about a hundred and twenty-five-page packet that we had to complete with tables and graphs and circles and arrows and all kinds of information. So many thanks to Mr. Loring and Mr. McBride and the team to make sure that we process that. So more to come on that. And my last one is I wanted to offer my congratulations to Jen Pappas. Jen is going to be the new G T V coordinator. So we're really happy for Jen. Jen is an incredible partner, very, very talented. And we're so grateful to have her continuing on with G T V. And lastly, next week is School Vacation Week. So we're all excited about that. I know that the teachers and the kids are all excited, so hopefully we'll have a great meeting and happy to answer any questions.
Go ahead, Jenny.
I just had a question. May first is coming up soon. Are our students having trouble with FAFSA?
Everyone's having trouble with FAFSA.
Are kids like being able to make decisions and?
So from what I've heard, Lil might have some perspective as a high school senior going through this process. The FAFSA is the Federal Financial Audit Information that parents have to submit when you're applying to colleges. Yes, it is a problem. But we have been working, I shared about a, maybe a year ago, that there was a requirement that in order for high schools to give a high school diploma, that people have to sign off on the FAFSA. And I can assure you that Mr. McBride and I will withhold no one's diploma for this requirement. We are doing everything we can to make sure that we have a signed form from everybody. But Lil, any?
Yeah, it is a problem. But a lot of schools that I applied to at least are moving back their deadline for enrollment deposits and stuff like that, which has been helpful. And our guidance department has been really great working with kids who need help, especially on Free Money Friday, which, anyone who doesn't know, Free Money Friday was a great event that guidance put on to help kids apply for a whole bunch of scholarships, which was fantastic. And they talked a lot about the FAFSA and what was happening and, you know, kind of how to deal with the situation. So, yeah, it's kind of just a waiting game.
Thank you.
Just curiosity, is it the website that they can't get their act together?
So like my student aid index came in, like the number came in really late, which basically means that my FAFSA wasn't processed and sent to schools way after I applied to them. So as I was getting my admissions letters, there was no financial aid that came along with that. And so a lot of the schools are still, like I'm still waiting for financial aid packages for the need-based aid side for some schools.
Which makes it really hard for you to make a decision about where you want to go.
Really hard.
Right, yeah.
And Brian, there's nothing that this little board can do because this is a federal thing and-
Well, the FAFSA is a federal thing, but that law that required us to get the completed FAFSA information before we give a diploma is a uniquely New Hampshire thing. That is a state law. Our partners in Bedford and a couple of the Bedford State reps have been working on, and I think, I think the vote already happened. I think that this is changing. So I don't believe it's been signed. I'm not sure what the status of the bill, but I'll double-check because a couple of the reps from Bedford have submitted it. It just, again, I think good intentions. And does it make sense for kids to fill out the financial information before they leave high school? It probably does. There's a good logic to that. But the idea that we're going to withhold giving a diploma for that purpose is ridiculous. Ridiculous.
All right, anybody else, any questions for Brian? All right, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Moving on to all business, second read, Shane.
So we have a number of policies that are up for second read. I don't know if there's any questions, comments. Otherwise...
Mr. Gross would be happy to answer any questions on these policies. He's ready.
What's that?
No, we're good, we're going to make motions and move forward.
Otherwise, yeah, we'll take motions to...
Move to approve Policy DBD, GBEE, and JJD as presented.
Thank you, Nicole, do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Shane, any further discussion? See none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, re-ananamous, go ahead.
The next one was DFD, Gate Receipts and Admissions.
Move to approve as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
By Ginny, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, re-ananamous, go ahead, Shane.
We had DGA, which were the Authorized Signatures.
Need a motion?
Move to approve Policy DGA as presented.
Thank you, Nicole, do I have a second? By Reda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, re-ananamous.
Next one was DKC, Expense Reimbursements.
Move to approve Policy DK.
Thank you, Nicole, do I have a second? By Reda, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, re-anannous.
And the last one from this batch from second reads is DM Cash in School Buildings.
All move to approve DM, but we did miss DKC.
No, I just did DKC.
No, you just did DKC.
Oh, okay.
We did miss DK.
I went right. So we missed one of them.
No, we're good. Alright, so I have a motion by Nicole for DM, do I have a second?
Second.
By Ginny, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, re-ananamous. Alright, Shane, now we're on to the first reads.
Alright, now we have first reads that we discussed a little bit earlier. Like I said, it was BCA, the Ethics Policy, it should be in your packet, and then we have JLCF, which was the Wellness Policy.
Could I interject? We got DK, I remember doing, I got it as an individual item. This is the payments checks, I don't know why it was in my packet.
It's in my packet too.
Yeah, it's under first reads.
Is that the first read?
I think that's what we meant, because it's on the list.
It's in the matrix, but it's not on the agenda.
Part of the six that was on the master list.
Yep, okay. So we did DKC.
I don't remember whether we did first read or second read.
That's where I was mistaken.
That's because we don't want to carry all the different copies.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, and that's what this is, right? DK is...
DK is a second read. Because we had to bring it back.
Yep, so we'll need a motion for DK as well.
Move to approve Policy DK.
By Nicole, do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Shane, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, re-annannous. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Alright, so then we have BCA and JLCF, which we discussed, so if you guys want to look those over and if you have questions.
And I can share for folks that are on the Policy Committee, JLCF, we reviewed, there was a discussion at our policy meeting, and we wanted to make sure that all the required elements were covered, and in fact, they were. So I think that we did it in a less long-winded way than the School Boards Association.
Yep.
Perfect, great.
Alright, so these will come back at the next meeting? Alright, so, go ahead.
I just had a question about BCA, because, and I, should I wait until the next meeting for that?
No, go ahead.
So the question, you know, I think we talked about just doing it through a board motion, which we did the last time, which is great. What if a board member is not there? Do they, by default, are covered by it because the whole board motioned it?
Yeah, they wouldn't be in the vote.
Good question.
That is a good question.
I thought the motion was a good move. I liked that motion.
Well, thank you. I would think because it is a policy reinforced by the board, every member of the board would have to adhere to it, whether they're here or not.
Right. It just shows that we did read it and just kind of gave an extra, because we used to sign it years ago, and that came off, so this was like a compromise.
Okay, thanks.
But that is a good point.
I did have a question too on the district wellness.
Yeah.
On the recess, there used to be a requirement that you couldn't keep a kiddo in from recess for behavior. And it's not listed here, and the reasons for keeping kids in.
I think that might have been something that was in handbooks, if it was, but not in the policy itself.
Okay, because I think it's important for kids not to not be able to go to recess because of behavior, because...
Yeah, the principals would agree with you.
Probably their behavior would be better when they came back from recess, so you don't think it belongs in the wellness, but in the policy?
I think it might be more appropriately placed in handbooks. I'll defer to Mrs. Kohler on that one.
Okay.
If the board wants to include it in the policy, you could.
I tend to agree with Ginny.
Ms. Bizarro had a lot of input into this.
Yeah, she did.
Is that part of, under her jurisdiction of wellness stuff?
Yes.
Recess and kids?
The recess and kid piece, she wouldn't have as much direct oversight.
So how would she be able to file? Now, this is based on all those crazy reports she was telling us about, right?
Right.
Is the recess thing in those crazy reports?
The recess thing, no, no, there's nothing in the, there's nothing that requires, the piece that Ginny brought up is not anywhere in New Hampshire rule or statute.
Okay, and this has to do with the rules and statutes?
Yeah, so the, you have to provide recess through certain grades, and it has to be a minimum of this many minutes. All of that is included in the ED 306, the minimum standards.
So that's why you were probably suggesting it makes a lot of sense to put it in the student handbook?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Alright, Shane, are you good?
I'm good.
Alright, so moving on, we have the field trip request.
Yeah, and I might actually do this one, you already approved this one, so this was one that was a rescheduling of a performance from 2023, but this would be an out-of-state trip going on May 28th to the Boston Opera House to go see a performance, which sounds incredible. So we would be looking for the board's approval of this. Like I said, I believe you approved this last year, but if we could please have an approval for the out-of-state field trip on May 28th to the Boston Opera House, please.
Alright, so moved. So I have a motion by Ginny, do I have a second?
I'll second.
By Reda, any further discussion? See none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, re-ananous, have a great time.
Thank you.
Alright, staffing.
So the staffing sheet that everyone should have, we have a notification, leave of absence, that's notification only, no action required. For your approval this evening, we have two administrator resignations. The first for Justin Hoft, and the second for Steve Largie. I'd like to thank both of them for their years of service and wish them well.
Alright, so I'll need a motion.
Motion to approve the administrator resignations as presented.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
By Shane, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, re-ananamous, go ahead.
Next batch, we have two teacher resignations, so we would thank them for their service and wish them well as well.
Need a motion?
Motion to approve the teacher resignations.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
By Nicole, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, re-ananous, go ahead.
The next one is for our administrator nomination for Maple Ave of Mr. Demers as the principal of Maple Ave. I would recommend that we table this one and talk about the compensation in non-public, so we can do that this evening, just to make sure the board is comfortable with everything.
Sounds good, and the next one?
And lastly, two additional, these are nominations, so congratulations, really hard to find special ed and school psychologists, so we're very happy to welcome these folks to the team for next year.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve the teacher nominations as...
Second. Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, re-ananous, and then...
Yeah, so the last piece that I have is to talk a little bit about our co-curricular status. So, I would refer the board back to, and I'd like to thank Scott and Kate for the work that they did on this. In 2022, we had a co-curricular review committee, I believe Mrs. McKinnon served on that committee for a couple of years. And we really worked hard to create 20 new positions from existing clubs that had no stipends. So 28 clubs we brought into paying stipends for. Two positions were eliminated, two that weren't being used anymore, and nine positions were adjusted as a rate of looking at each individual position. Policy JJ was drafted for amendment to update the co-curricular process. And what we have landed on is, consistent with Policy JJ, we would come to the board at this meeting every year in April with recommendations for new clubs that would be in what's called pilot status for two years, consistent with Policy JJ. And those co-curriculars are listed on here, and actually, one of them is missing, so let me go through each of these. So the first is Middle School Chess Club. This is something that we actually did and were able to pay a stipend during COVID, because there was state money available for that. The second is Creative Writing Club at Goffstown High School. And I should mention that Mr. Derocher, who is our Activities Director, among many other wonderful hats that he wears, and Mr. McBride is here to speak about these, Mrs. Milligan is here to speak about these, and Mrs. Gogan is here to speak about these as well. So any questions that you have about any of these clubs, they're here, and they're happy to come up to the front row where there's a microphone with any of these questions. The next club is Dungeons and Dragons at the Middle School. This one isn't on the list, but I included it, and this is the GSA at Goffstown High School, which is the Gay Straight Alliance, is sometimes called Gender Sexuality Alliance. This club has existed in this school for 20 years. So for 20 years, we've had a GSA, and that has never been a stipended position, but I believe it should be. The next one is Hedgehog Snapshots, right, Mrs. Gogan? Hedgehog Snapshots. So this program in the past has been run by the Bartlett PTA for years, but this has to do with taking photos and developing our yearbook for our students. The next one is National Art Society, which is a new club. And the last one is Science Olympiad, which I hadn't heard a lot about, Mr. McBride shared a lot of, they just had a big event that just happened. It sounds like some really incredible things. So those are the ones that we would be bringing forth before the board this evening for your approval for the two-year pilot status. Three?
Three, yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was three.
Thank you, Mr. Gross.
Anybody have any questions, comments?
Could we go through where the schools are? I've got chess at Mountain View, creative writing at Goffstown. I don't, is Dungeons and Dragons here at the high school?
Dungeons and Dragons is Mountain View.
Mountain View, okay.
GSA is high school. Hedgehog Snapshots is Bartlett. National Honor Art Society is Goffstown High School. And Science Olympiad is Goffstown High School. Is there also a middle school equivalent of the Science Olympiad that's only a high school thing? That's too bad, because this is pretty cool.
Go ahead, Nicole.
Yeah, just a general question about how it works, so if some of these have been in existence for a little while, how does it become, so, how does the three years just start now, I guess? Is it just because they're only coming to us now, and how does that decision get made?
Yeah, so unfortunately, when we revamped the policy, that's the process that we identified. Wendy, looks like she has something to add.
Yeah, could I also mention, so for Chess Club this year, we actually used a Title IV grant to be able to fund that. And then also, Science Olympiad, we wrote a Title IV grant to be able to fund that. So those were more enrichment activities that were looking to move into co-curricular.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wendy.
Anyone else? Questions, comments? Alright, so we'll need a motion.
Motion to approve the new co-curricular clubs as presented. Second.
Alright, so Caroline, second. Oh, yeah, go ahead, come on up.
Mrs. Gogan, principal of Bartlett.
That's why it's Hedgehog. Thank you. I just wanted to mention that the PTA has been working on that, like Brian said, for years. And we've run into some privacy issues with that, so I've had to take it back on myself and go through, you know, all of the editing. We collect, we collect photos and things like that from the PTA, but also, staff members do as well. But it's become a, kind of a role that the principal has to take on the editing and checking all the privacy. So I would request, with Mrs. Pischka taking over next year, that is it possible to consider starting it right away next year? Because it's something we've always done as the yearbook, but, you know, we have to be really careful with permissions and things like that. So I'm wondering, I always ask for just a little bit more than you always give me, right?
You certainly do.
I certainly do, so it would just be very helpful that the principal doesn't have to edit and find the students that don't have permission and things like that. We have two staff members that want to take it on, that have already been helping with that, but, and the PTA is willing to give it, they really want to give it over to the, you know, to the staff. And the difference with this Hedgehog headlines would be, Hedgehog Snapshots would be that the students would be part of taking the pictures. We're going to be getting cameras, they'll be working with the advisors during the school day, who are teachers. They'd actually get to do some of the editing and things like that, so it's much more interactive. So that's my request.
Alright, I think this is something that they already do at Maple.
Yes.
So...
Yeah.
We already have something similar and that works.
So what we could do, if the board is open to the idea of it, when we go through all of our stipended positions and the reconfiguration that I mentioned earlier, we have just under $2,000 available for additional stipends. So if the board wanted to give this some thought, I'm not saying this one in particular, but any of these on this list, there's about two grand available that we, and these stipends in general are in the $892 is what the majority of them would be. So we could fund a couple of these if we wanted to. So if the board's amenable to that, we could maybe put this on our retreat agenda as a topic to have a little more conversation.
I would say if they've been already doing it, they deserve to get a stipend, because that's what we were trying to do with the...
That is exactly...
...committee is trying to catch people up. And the good part of the stipend program that we had worked on was that more of the elementary schools in Maple and Mountain View were beginning to get some new things for the kids to do. The high school has a lot of things, the other schools didn't have as many. So if we could use some of these monies for the elementary schools to get some activities, that would be awesome, I think.
Thank you for considering. I'll stop asking that, Brian. I'm officially done asking, thanks. Thank you very much.
Ginny, I agree, but it does look like we would have several that have been in progress already for a little while, so.
Yes, and then how do you...
It does seem like something that definitely the principal probably shouldn't be spending time on, so.
Right, right. And if they've been doing a yearbook and the PFT or whatever, the, the parents have been doing it, they've been doing it. So I would think that counts as something they've been doing.
So how do you guys want to handle this? Because we do have a policy that says three years. We just made a motion.
Actually, I'm reading it now, and it said something about two years.
Three is in existence.
Yeah, I'm still trying to read it, I'm not ready to make a motion tonight.
So we have a motion, but now we have a request out of one of them to start a stipend at the next school year. So what do you guys want to do? Go ahead, Beth.
So the, the, the co-curricular is the snapshots, which are the kids taking the picture, versus the yearbook, which is like this whole other thing that I, you know, so I think that's one thing we might want to think about, that we're not talking about money for the co-curricular necessarily, it's for the actual yearbook production.
This is three years.
I think it's the same thing, so at least the way it works at Maple is the kids take a bunch of pictures, the staff help them put it together into the yearbook, is what they're called. I think that...
Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
Students will work with their advisor to plan the yearbook, take photographs, edit photographs, and create a yearly Bartlett Elementary School yearbook. Sorry, it's... I know, but we don't take questions.
No, I know that, but I didn't know if she was, she's not a...
Are you adding something about?
I was just saying, I can speak to how Maple Ave does the yearbook.
Is she a teacher?
I work there.
She's a parent.
Oh, she's a parent. What do you guys want?
Yeah, I think we're good. Thank you, though. All right, so we need to move on. So we have a motion, but we had a request for hedgehogs.
Is there a way to approve that they all are going to go into pilot? And we'll discuss any exceptions to funding at the retreat?
I agree.
Could we do that? Okay, so the motion then stays?
As is.